Good evening, welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg meeting for April 2nd, 2018. At this time, I'll ask folks to please turn their phones to either the silent mode or turn them off in respect to decorum of the meeting. I'll also announce that tonight, we are without both Commissioner Blanchard and Mayor Briggs. So, with that in mind, I'll ask that we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in just for all.
Okay, our future meetings include the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, which will occur on April 17th at 7:30 here in the meeting room. There will be a National Arbor Day observance and celebration, April 28th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., I believe that's a Saturday, and that's in Community Park, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The Quarterly Planning Commission meeting will occur on April 30th. The Dog Park will have a grand opening on May 5th at 9:00 a.m., Saturday also?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. And the Town Council, our next meeting will occur on May 7th, 2018. This is subject to change, however, there might be a meeting between now and then that we'll discuss. Okay? Okay. Okay, moving forward, are there any other meetings we need to be aware of? Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Ritz?
We'll discuss it at the next meeting, but might as well just throw it out there now that the next Parks and Recreation meeting will be May 22nd.
Great, okay.
I think I did my math right there.
Tie down.
Third Tuesday in May.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Calendar's gone.
Mr. Sweeney?
I'm fine.
Okay, alright, very good, thank you. Alright, at this time, we'll turn our attention to the minutes from the March 5th, 2018 meeting. Does anybody have any modifications or concerns related to it? Yes, Commissioner Buckman?
I have one modification. On page 5 of 48, when I asked before for the Board to review the Ethics Complaints and Procedures, I also asked that the Appeals Process and Procedures be reviewed as well, and that was left off of the minutes.
Terrific, okay, now I'm looking at the page here, and I'm looking at...
Right under here, where it says Set Agenda Items for Second. We have a tab down, and it says Commissioner Buckman requests the Board review the Procedures. So also Appeals Procedures needs to be entered in there.
Okay. And Review Appeals Procedure, is that how you want it phrased?
Policies and Procedures, yes. Or Process and Procedures.
So as it says right now, Commissioner Buckman requested the Board review the Procedures for Ethics Complaints at a future town meeting, okay, and you'd like to have it revised to say Commissioner Buckman requested the Board review the Procedures and review...
For Ethics and for the Appeals Process. I mentioned both.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna add that as the modification. Okay, great, thank you. Any other modifications?
I had none.
Nobody else, okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
I'll make a motion to accept the March 5th minutes as modified.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Blanchard absent. Okay, we now turn to the deputy for the Sheriff's Report.
Good evening, this is the March 2018 Community Deputy Report. The bulk of the calls were 911 calls and alarms, as shown on the paper there. For the month, we had 116 traffic stops. It's almost 300 for the year so far. Lot of citations, warnings, we were at 80. The arrests and violations, we had two traffic arrests, and the pending charges down there should be two and two. I have a traffic charges pending, and also another trespass from the Dollar General. Under the Calls for Service, there was two deaths in town, March. One was, ended up being a suicide, and one was considered a natural death. The one was on the Silo Hill Road at Robin Dale Drive near the park, and the other, the natural death was down at the Welty Apartments. There was one overdose, I know I talked with Commissioner Buckman earlier today, and that 's gonna be the only one for the year. I wasn't there, based on the report, it's probably an opioid because an Narcan was administered, and the subject was, you know, came out. And I had a couple arrests there, as noted there. The special assignments and events, I attended the Read Across America Mother Seaton School, that was a makeup, so that was on the 23rd, and I attended the town meeting here, beginning of the month, or last month. I emptied the drug box as well, and I could just go to note here, if you have a large amount, because there was quite a bit, it was pretty much overflowing, the drop box. So if you have a large amount of medications, like abundant amount, you can either contact us at the Town Office, we can either come pick it up, because the drop box is only so big, and once you keep piling, you know, all the medication in there, I mean, some people were coming in with bags.
How often is that emptied?
We just kinda check it, and then, you know, empty it based on how full it is, but definitely, it was definitely over the bin, so if you have a large amount, or if you have any questions, just call us or email us, and we can respond and get back to you, let you know, probably come by and get it if it's a lot. There was, one of the crashes in town was, again, let me just go back to the crashes, I think we had nine reported. There was nine crashes, only two needed reported, none of them were as a result of construction. One of them was due to not obeying the right turn only to East Lincoln and South Seaton, I know those signs were new, and so someone tried to go straight across there like they have, and caused another crash. And also getting a lot of frauds and scams by email, phone, and something in the mail that they get. If there's any concerns with that, or you wanna just to come out or talk with us about it, you can either contact the Town Office again, or you can email us, and we'll get back to you. If you have any doubts, just contact us, or, like I said, you can call the Town, the Town can just email us, you know, or put us in contact, we can call them back right away, even if we're off, we can respond to them, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the deputy?
I have one question.
Yeah.
A lot of the people in the town have expressed a concern about the scheduling of our deputies, because on Friday nights and Saturday nights, when I guess we need you the most, you're not there, so I was wondering if you set that schedule, or if we set that schedule?
No, we can set our own schedules, we can adjust them. I work on Saturday and Sunday, I work every Saturday and Sunday, so I'm off Friday to spend with people, family, stuff like that, but I mean, if something comes up, I don't know what Deputy Mossdohler's schedule is, but we can, if there's a concern there...
Maybe you guys could take turns, that we have someone Friday night and Saturday night?
Yep, do that.
Any other questions or comments for... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, sure, I'm sorry.
And then also, the trucks are still barreling through town, have we contacted that main company that's up on 140?
Georgian Sons.
Yeah, and asked them if they could, you know, talk to their folks?
No, I'll put that on here to just contact Georgian Sons.
Because they're barreling through, and they have very little regard for how closely they ride up on us, and how fast they're going, and I just, one day, it's gonna be, you know, something very tragic's gonna happen, and then it's gonna be too late.
Okay.
Is that something also town staff would be able to do, or would you rather the deputy handle that?
I would prefer the deputy do it.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah, we'll contact them, just to express the concerns.
Terrific, okay, Commissioner? If, unfortunately, procedurally, we're kinda limited. Let's have the deputy finish, and I can invite you up when he's complete.
I'll ask the deputy.
Okay, okay. I did receive an email from an individual in Southgate, and they expressed a very strong concern about speeding that's occurring on Cedar Lane in Community Park.
Okay.
And they are most concerned with those folks who are coming into baseball practices and softball practices, so at that time of day, when kids are out there. I think that's really what I'm getting at, is like after-school hours, I think that's kinda reading between the lines in his email. So, if you could be mindful of that, if there could be some perhaps speed enforcement there, or...
Yeah, you could do that, I think it's 15 miles an hour, so it's, it'll be pretty easy, because no one's gonna be going 15 miles an hour.
Okay. The other thing he brought up, and I'll share this with the Board, was perhaps consideration of another speed bump on Cedar Lane as a thought, so, as a thought. So, that's where we are.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure. I have one more thing, I have one thing too, actually, it ties into the Georgian Sons, and this is probably something that you can't monitor, and I don't even know if town staff can, but, you know, due to the construction at the square, things have been going pretty smoothly. When the traffic lights are off, the guys are out there, and they're the ones directing traffic. One day, they were letting cars go from North Seaton, heading south, motioning for them to go through, and then, I guess, didn't see another vehicle, but they were still kinda motioning, and they were motioning another, the other vehicles heading east on Main Street. One was said Georgian Sons truck, that was at a complete stop, there was almost a collision there. So there was some concern, concern there, I guess they just weren't paying attention, but...
Yeah, it's just the...
I don't think it's really, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, it's just the human element of it, yeah, I mean, I've been there, done that.
Have you seen any, anything else going on?
No, no, I mean, and I routinely stop during the day, and talk with some of the guys from S.H.A., and even the flaggers, see if they're having any issues. It's always no. I mean, there may, well, people, you know, yell some stuff sometimes, but that's about it, nothing crazy, so.
Ms. Bullets, have you received any?
We get periodic complaints about the flagging, we haven't gotten that many, but when we do, we pass them along to State Highway, because it's under, it falls under them.
Okay. Alright, thanks. That's it.
Okay, great, sorry, didn't mean to step on your toes. Any other comments for the deputy?
It didn't hurt you much.
Good, good. Any other comments or questions for the deputy? Here are none, okay. Thank you, Officer Whitehouse.
Absolutely.
I think we're squared away.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you for everything.
Sure, sure, yeah, be careful, please. Ms. Henry, a quick question. I'll ask you to come up to the podium for a moment, if you would?
For what?
And if you wanna, if you wanna speak to the Board about an issue, or...
Oh, no, for the deputy, you mean, or for...
Let me invite you, I'm not trying to be a pain.
No.
Okay, so, you had a question, was it for the Board, for the deputy, or was it for the deputy directly? Because I don't wanna not have you heard.
Oh, no, I think it was for the deputy directly, it was, yeah. I just heard that it was, that Georgian Sons trucks could be in a schedule, that there was another, I don't know if it was in Tawnytown, or somewhere where the trucks go through, like, a schedule to where they could come through town, like, let's say at night, and instead of, like, so many trucks during the day, you know, like, something like that, too. It just seems like the trucks are constantly, constantly, you know, coming through, and, like, Mrs. Buckman was saying, eventually, something is going to happen, and I, you know, I see the kids coming from Mother Seaton, and from the school, getting out, crossing the street, not at the light, but, you know, like, you know, and I'm like, ugh, always like, hoping that anything, you know. But I was just wondering about the schedule issue, yeah, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another comment.
Just quickly, they run...
I have to ask you to come to the podium, and actually, Ms. Henry, thank you for coming up, this is Maria Henry from 113 East Main Street. I'll ask you to please introduce yourself and your address, and...
Donald Thon, Emmitsburg Tattoo on the Square, just wanted to know, my brother, younger brother, drives for Georgian Sons, they run three shifts, 24 hours a day, non-stop, seven days a week, just to clear the record.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Moving forward, alright, so we've looked at the agenda, we've heard from the deputy, we now need to turn to our Town Manager.
Good evening, this is the Town Manager's Report for February of 2018. I'll go through some of the highlighted areas. Related to streets, the staff and a contractor plowed and salted for some of the snow and ice events we received in February, as well as they repaired some potholes around town. Related to the sidewalk and bridge project, they continue to mark utilities around the square as the project continues, and they take streetlights down around the square, again, as the project continues. In the parks, staff installed a new fundraiser sign in front of the Dog Park. Staff moved old equipment from the pump room at the pool, so the work can continue in there. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. The roughing filters are being backwashed three times a day. Our well levels are the best that we've seen in a very long time. As you can see, we're only down 28 feet from the optimum levels, 25 feet in Well 3, and Well 5 is only three feet below. This month, we had about 11.7% backwash, is about where we usually are. In wastewater, we received 6.20 inches of precipitation in the month of February, we currently have a surplus of 1.86 inches over the last six months. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 782,000 gallons per day, but only consumed 254,966 gallons per day, which means that 67.4% of the water treated was wild water in the month of February, which is not good. We had no spills of, or we had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of February, I didn't change that one line, but we did exceed the plant's design capacity on, sorry, I have a typo there, 12, 13 times in the month of February, and it was all related to wild water. Trash pickup will remain on Mondays for the month of April. Again, I've listed some of my top meetings for the month of February. Under noteworthy, I want to talk a little about, about inflow and infiltration, the INI. The plant was over capacity 13 times this month, due mostly to the amount of INI that's coming in from our sewer lines. The wastewater treatment plant is bringing in an estimate of 3 point, or .351 million gallons per day in excess daily of our INI over our yearly average. Ideally, we should be near the total flow to town from the water treatment plant. So if we consume 254,966 gallons per day, ideally, that's the amount that we should be treating at the wastewater treatment plant, however, we're not. With industry sta, with the industry standards, so this is a ballpark estimating it costs $2 per 1,000 gallons per day, it costs us approximately $25,000 this month alone to treat INI, the wild waters, or the wild water. Staff's been working hard to find out where the, where the majority of it's coming from, and we believe we've localized it to the East Main Street, so we'll be coming back with some more proposals on how we can treat that. But we had been requested by the Board if we could come up with a number, and we're finally able to come up with that. We're, experienced a lot of power blips at the plant as well, it's causing problems with our electronics. The chemical usage is down at the wastewater treatment plant, so that's good news. The bacteria test for the new line at the Seaton Center passed. This past month, in March, we had four leaks or breaks on West Main Street due to the testing at the Seaton Center, and basically, what happened is the pressure went sky-high, and then went way down too quickly, it wasn't done correct, and what happened is the pressure built up, and it targeted the weak areas of the line. Staff worked for three days, working on those breaks. I have something that I wanted to point out now, and then I'll bring it up for a future agenda item. As you, if you recall, earlier in 2017, I asked for, or beginning of 2018, I asked for a budget transfer into 140 South Seaton for painting related to lead certification. That amount, basically, I'll just give you a little history, that house was purchased by the Town in 2006, and it should've been lead certified in 2006, before it was ever rented, and each time after the tenants were turned over, unfortunately, that was never done, and so we need to get the house painted and lead tested, and our newest tenants moved in in December of 2013, so we are, it's set to be painted next week, starting next week. Unfortunately, the expenses are larger than what we had originally asked for in the budget transfer initially, so I'm gonna bring back a budget transfer in the May meeting to cover those expenses, but I wanted to kinda give you the update on it.
Great, okay.
And that's, that's all I have for the Manager's Report.
Okay, do we have any questions for the Town Manager related to the report? Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir?
On the sidewalk repair part, the sidewalk repair project itself, a lot of, there's a lot of signs and stuff that are down, there's, the road signs and stuff were either broke off or thrown down on the ground, I don't know if anybody's taking notice to them, on the side streets and on the...
Yeah, some of them are, have been put down because they're not using them, and they'll, they'll put them back up when they go to use them, particularly, I think you're talking about like on Lincoln.
Yeah, Lincoln, and I noticed on Federal Avenue, too, I think there's a couple down.
Right, so they've, they staged their signs all through the project, so that they can pull them up when they need them. If there's some that are broken, then they should probably come and look at that.
And they might need to check, make sure they're all okay, and good standing, and also, the, a lot of, I had a couple people come up to me, and since winter time is almost through here, there's a lot of gravel and debris on the streets, on sidewalks, too, itself, and, you know, people, wheelchair and stuff will have, you have to hit the stones, or a little stuff, but there's a lot of debris.
The gravel from, from the tree?
If you just go up through the town, just walking, you'll see it.
Mm-hmm.
Not from the gra, I mean, from the construction work.
Mm-hmm.
If...
Probably from the tree pits and everything that's still left exposed.
And, and breaking the concrete, and just a lot of debris everywhere.
Snow plowing also pushed it up on the sidewalks and deposited...
Okay.
Okay, also, when you had the main breaks last week, you just said something about the pressure going up, why were they testing our main lines?
They weren't, they were doing a, they were doing their flow tests at the Seaton Center, and when you do a flow test, you have to turn the fire hydrant up, or turn the hydrant up, and when they turned it down, they turned it down too fast, instead of slowly reducing the pressure, they went from the high pressure to the low pressure very quickly.
I understand, I just wondered what it was, yeah, we call it hammer effect, it just sends a shockwave back through and breaks it.
Exactly, and that's unfortunately what happened.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
Commissioner Buckman hit her hand up.
Oh, Commissioner Buckman, go ahead.
The snow removal over by the bridge, I sent Maddie a couple of pictures, so the pathway for pedestrians to walk, the snow was plowed, now winter's over, hopefully, was piled so high that Marty Miller couldn't clear it, it was too much snow. And then also, there is a little area that a pedestrian can stand in between going to Jubilee and Emmett Gardens, that is never, never shoveled, and who's responsible for that? He's been doing that, but it's really, you know, not his responsibility, so I was asked to bring that to our attention. Also, a little concerned with, if we're following the structural integrity of the bridge, because every time I drive over there, there's another steel plate, now I'm worried about motorcyclists, and what we're doing, not to be reactive, more proactive than reactive?
We can request State Highway put a sign up, I mean, as far as caution for motorcyclists, I mean, I don't know what else that they can do for that.
Kind of crumbling, is it crumbling? Why do we keep a new plate every day?
Because there was, there is a hole in the bridge, and they've had to patch it, and they're putting the, the steel plates on top of it.
Yeah, as of April 1st, from April 1st to November 1st, you're not allowed to have steel plates above, above blacktop level. Anytime from November 1st to April 1st, in the wintertime, they're supposed to be milled below the surface.
Oh, I see, I didn't know that.
So, and with State Highway, they have their, yeah, for plowing also, for other things, too, for bicycles and stuff.
Would you say it's April 1st to...
April 1st to November 1st, they're, they're allowed to have them above, above the surface, the blacktop surface, but they have to be pinned, and they also have to be signed, that's state law, you have to have steel plate signs on both sides of the bridge, and there's steel plates ahead, so the motors and motorcycles know.
Okay, I don't think there's signs, so we'll have to bring that to their attention.
Yeah, that's, I'm surprised, because they're required by state law.
Right, okay.
And then, I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, because it kinda has something to do with the construction. Over on Flat Run, if you were on 15 South, and you looked over the bridge, a lot of times, you know, logs and branches create a dam, and Marty clears those, he just does that on his own. If he doesn't, then, when there's heavy rain, then Emmett Gardens gets flooded. Well, some blocks and sandbags from the construction have washed down, and he's not, not physically able to remove them from that area.
Okay.
Because if you look over the bridge and look down, you'll see it, and it probably needs, like, a tow truck to...
From out on 15, you can see it? Okay. Alright.
I think a while ago, we talked about a similar problem with debris buildup under 15 at the creek there?
Yeah, it's a culvert.
Correct, and I think the response was, after we kinda tracked it down, to have, to make State Highway aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was like, that was the first phone call, I believe, okay, so, if that helps.
We'll certainly get hold of them tomorrow.
There's these big wooden blocks that they use to pull some machinery that floated down.
Any other items?
I don't think so.
Okay, Commissioner Ritz?
Mine's a multi-part question, and I believe I might've asked this a few years ago, but memory's escaping me. The 400,250 gallons of water that we purchased from Mount St. Mary's?
Yes.
Number one, why are we purchasing so much water from the Mount? Number two, how much are we paying for this?
We, we purchased roughly, what's that boiled down to, it's like 12,000 a day. It's helped to keep the residuals in the line, out on that part of town where there's still water. As also, as you recall, last summer, when we had the drought, and we could not get our lake numbers, and we could not get the numbers from the well, we needed the additional water supply from the Mount.
Where's the...
They've had this agreement in place for 25 years.
Are we locked into a particular rate, or...
We pay, I don't know the rate off the top of my head, and we just went through the budget, and I don't recall what it is, I can get that amount to you on what the, what the rate is, and how much we pay yearly, but it's something we don't want to get rid of with that agreement.
Okay, where's the, we, so it's coming from the Mount, where's it going, then?
Comes into town.
Just...
Up Anna Dale Road.
Yeah, it comes into Anna Dale Road, it goes to, goes to the treatment plant, and then comes into town, correct, Commissioner Sweeney? Yes?
It was for, the Mount has an underground lake, they have supplied water for, for hundreds of years, and it's an extra water source for us, if we have a breakage in the line from the mountain, which we've had a couple times, they can shut the mountain down, and we still have water for the town, through the Mount, sad.
So it's a redundant system to keep us protected?
We don't use it all the time, only when the numbers were down, we had, we hooked up to their line, it's been probably 20 years ago, that's when I first became Commissioner, that's been in the 90s. So, for that purpose, so we would have extra water. If we had a drought, or the wells went down too low, we couldn't draw from them. In the, in the 90s, the water treatment plant was like a big witches brew pot, you wouldn't want to look at it, but it was a bad shape back then, because it was really old, when we put the new one on, so, that's why we hooked to the Mount. But the water was always there, it was there for 30 or 40 years, I think, because we used to have our own water plant, I mean, water, sell water ourselves, like some of the towns do, so, our own water plant thing.
And if some extraordinary circumstance occurred, where the Mount wasn't able to tap into its rather massive reservoir, they would be able to buy from us also.
Yes, it goes both ways.
So, it's reciprocal, but...
If something happens to them.
I think specifically, Mr. Ritz, when you're asking the question, you know, why do we do it every month, we want to keep those lines functioning, so if we do have, like, a heavy draw, those lines we know are, they're capable. Does that answer your question?
It keeps the buildup and sediment from, residuals, they're called, and keeping from settling into pipes, it keeps everything flowing.
And when you get the budget, when we present the budget at the next meeting in May, you'll see the exact dollar amount that's, or what's budgeted for what we spend. We get about 12,500 to about 13,000 gallons per day from the Mount.
No, it's, it's just escaping me, but thank you, that'll be, that's right around the corner, yeah, alright.
Any other questions for town staff related to the Manager's Report? None, okay, alright. We now turn to our Town Planner for the Planner's Report.
Okay, first of all, GIS, I've been using it a lot to help with maps for grant applications that Ms. Shaw is doing.
Can you speak up?
Can you speak up a little, please?
And I will be, we will be working with, um...
Ms. Sibley, could you use the microphone? We're having trouble hearing you.
I am using the microphone. It's right here.
We, we can hear you. Could you maybe lift it a little bit toward your mouth? Thanks.
At any rate, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Much better.
Anyway, we're still working with the consultant to, um, do fieldwork. When the weather permits, we'll finish up the water and sewer mapping, and then we'll be working with the consultant to map the storm drains for our MS4 permit. Sidewalk project has been ongoing. Um, various things have arisen with design and, oh, just try and keep people informed of what's going on. Uh, community legacy. We're about to be able to close out our fiscal year 2016 grant. The fiscal year sixteen money, we had two years to spend it, so this is, um, the end of that time period. I have to sit down and figure out, what remaining money we have in 2017 funds. We've committed quite a bit of money for fiscal year seventeen, and then see whether we have money for any additional projects. Brookfield Development, you probably know that we had, um, Model Home on Wheatley Drive, which has gone impressively quickly. We also just, uh, received a permit application for a second model home on Ramblewood. So that'll probably go up about as fast. Permits and zoning. One that's worth mentioning is the elementary school roof replacement. Will be taking place, uh, for a couple months this summer, and it will involve asphalt. Thus, there will be some amount of odor. That's just kind of a heads up. Uh, conferred McDonald's, um, is doing an upgrade of the exterior, but also portions of the interior to make it ADA accessible and just in general, um, upgrade, you know, kind of make it look better. Uh, hasn't had much work for quite a while, so that permit is okay with us, and it's going through the county right now. They're gonna have the new menu boards and that sort of thing also. The play lot in Emmett Gardens, that permit is done, uh, both at the MDE level and the town level. The pool parking lot, we need an application for a permit for that to show what the spaces, where the spaces will be striped. And let's see. And other than that, we're, um, following up on some enforcement issues that have been backlogged due to other things that have come up. And the dog park, as was mentioned, there'll be a grand opening on, um, May...
Fifth.
Fifth? So far, we have four benches ordered that have dedications with them, and those are totally funded by the donation. And then we'll be getting one that's a additional bench that is not, has, that'll be paid for by the town. Got various kinds of signage. Just like the large dog side and the small dog side and the pick up your dog poop kind of signs. And then we've ordered, uh, waste stations. So, yes. Any questions?
Mr. Ritz, yes, sir.
How are we doing on donations for the dog park?
We have about four thousand, four thousand eight hundred dollars currently.
And the anticipated amount we were looking for was, wasn't it around eighteen?
Our initial amount is about eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
That was just to pay for the whole thing. I mean, that's a dream. You know, ideally, we wanted to fundraise for the whole dog park. Four thousand eight hundred dollars, I think, is very good. We'll continue to seek donations.
Okay. Um, did you, I'm sorry, Ms. Sibley, did you say the pool parking lot was going to be striped?
Um, it's going to be paved. And then the parking spaces will be marked.
Okay, that's, that's what I was, I must have missed that one. I, I didn't know we were paving it.
It was a POS grant that was submitted for, I believe, either last year or the year before. And with their, they take a year to award any grant. And so we just received notification of that probably towards the end of last year, and then trying to work with the, the construction. So, yes, there's gonna be, um, a new sidewalk and a parking lot that'll be paved with spaces.
Okay. I must have missed that meeting, sorry. Because I'm envisioning the stones, you know, I grew up right, right there, the pool parking lot was in our backyard pretty much. And, um, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, any questions for the planner?
Um, yes. The dog parks, um, so we did, the town is gonna put the whole thing in. We're just gonna try to get the donations from back. Is that correct? Like, everything's gonna be put in?
Right, correct. We've, we've ordered the things that we needed minus, um, some of the other, the amenities that we, that the board recommended we strike. So, yes, we're waiting. The water line should be going in here within the next week or two. That you got, as the board, you designated funds to, to build the dog park. The donations, and with just anything additional would help offset the cost.
You had something else?
Well, regarding the dog park, I mean, initially, when it was presented to us, was we had this grant. It was gonna take care of everything, and then it didn't take care of everything, and all these fees keep getting added on top of it. It's just becoming astronomical. And this dog park is gonna be free of charge, I'm assuming. People are just gonna come, bring their pets and enjoy it.
Correct.
We're not gonna get the donations that we wanted.
Well, unfortunately...
Not to be a negative naysayer, but we're never gonna get that dream amount. You know, people want the dog park, but then they're not gonna step up and pay for it, so...
If I may.
What are we gonna do each year then? You know, we're, we're, we're getting all this money together to put the dog park in, and then next year, we're gonna have to have more money set aside to maintain said dog park. It's...
Ms. Sibley, you said you had something to add?
I'll go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a little, I mean, if you recall, the initial grant that was submitted was for a different location that then was not approved for various reasons. The grant itself, a lot of background and a lot of legwork into it, did not go into it. So it wasn't, the grant wasn't submitted probably to the, the actual cost that it should have been. And so that was, and then also, the state cut some of the funding that we asked for, so we didn't get the amount of funding that we were hoping for, because, for various reasons. And then this additional spot was picked for it.
So we didn't find out all that until we already cleared the lot and put the fencing up?
Which lot? The new lot?
Yeah.
Not really, no. We, I mean, the, the, the general cost of it, you know, your basics was what was, you know, was in the grant. These extras are what, you know, that you guys approved. We don't have, you know, we, we wanted to build you the ideal dog park. If you wanted to cut certain items out of it, you know, that was certainly up to you to direct the town staff not to do. But the, the dog park was voted initially to move forward on it a couple of years ago. Neither one of us were part of the initial project either.
I'm, I'm not taking it out on the two of you. I'm just voicing my continuing frustration on the whole dog park. That, that's all.
And the community is very frustrated as well.
Well, unfortunately, I won't debate it, but these, these things, I guess, should have been addressed a long time ago and not given the approval. Um, we can only do what we're directed to do.
And I do know people who are very enthusiastic about the dog park also, so, and, and, and I would say that there are members of the community also who are very enthusiastic about it, so. So, and, but, no, I understand. I understand what you're saying. Any other questions for the planner related to these items? No?
I do have one more.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
We know when the trees are gonna be started to be planted? Is there a schedule for the trees to be planted?
At the dog park?
No, at, on, on Main Street project.
Oh, the trees, um...
On the Main Street, on, on, since most of the sidewalks are done.
Sometime in, soon, probably, because the project is supposed to be done by about June.
Yeah.
So I imagine the trees will be planted in May.
But I, I, do we, as the town staff, do we have someone that's gonna go through and check all the sidewalks and stuff, make sure they're not broken and cracked before?
There'll be a final walkthrough with State Highway, with the town, with the contractor. And as we find things, they are sent to State Highway to put on their bucket list.
Yeah, because I noticed a lot of spots that were broken or cracked already.
Mm-hmm.
Also, Federal Avenue, I don't know what happened, right down Federal Avenue at the intersection where Seaton Center is gonna be put out.
Mm-hmm.
I think they broke, someone had broken the house, poked a hole into the house on the outside of the house on the corner there beside of the Boyle's Old Store. When they put the new concrete in and the new, the new state, uh, so, areas.
I don't know that specific what happened there, but I know that there's been an ongoing back and forth with the project manager for State Highway and those owners.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'd seen it when I was walking the other day, go down, check out Seaton Center. You could tell it was broken when they put the sidewalk in. They poked a hole right in the side of the house.
I think what they're doing is putting them all on what they call a punch list, so that everything will get fixed.
Yeah.
I mean, there's state inspectors.
It's all broken up. Not the sidewalk, even the sidewalk, the new sidewalk in, in that area is already cracked and broken already too, that they just put in. Hopefully, town staff can send somebody with them to check all these sidewalks and stuff out, so we, we don't get, have, have them all. We, you know, it's a lot of money and time.
Definitely send an email into, definitely send an email into staff with the, like, the intersection, so...
I meant for the whole town when they go through it, because it's, it's gonna be a main, main dedication here in June.
Right.
So they don't have a lot of time to fix it.
We also, there's a, there's a one-year period, um, for State Highway, their contract with the contractor.
So they can replace it within a whole year? They have a stipulation? That's good.
And the same thing with the vegetation. There's a one-year timeframe.
Case the trees die?
Right.
That's, that's good, huh? I, I just didn't want to look so poorly after they get, you know, your brand new stuff, and it's all broken up already. And also, there's still a piece missing from, on North Seaton Avenue, you know, from Irish, Irristown Road to the American Legion.
In that's...
Not done.
In that section, um, let's see, it's one eleven and one fif... One eleven and one thirteen, I guess it is. The sidewalk in front of those is cracked. That will be replaced. We just had to do, um, uh, right-of-entry letters, uh, for those two properties. And then the sidewalk, the rest of the way to the corner of Irristown, is in pretty good shape.
Oh, they're gonna leave that. I found that barber shop.
But they're going to replace the curb.
Oh, okay.
And the curb is actually in the town right of way, so they didn't need any permission from anybody to, um, to work on that. So that's, that will be done. So we'll have new sidewalk.
Up to the barber, up to my father's footsteps.
Sounds right.
Right. About where the grass starts.
Barber, barber shop's the only thing up that side.
Okay, any other questions for the planner? Okay, Ms. Sibley, regarding the McDonald's, um, upgrades, do we have any say in the aesthetics on the exterior? In that, we, we had some input on the Dollar General before it got built. My concern is that it comes back and it's, you know, you know, the building's more of an advertisement for McDonald's rather than something that fits into the community?
It will be there. If you've probably seen him around, the updated McDonald's look.
I don't know, I'm...
Well...
Frank Lloyd Wright-esque.
It's, um...
Parallel lines and great planes has come to mind.
If you wanna come in and look at the, the plans, it's, it's just, um...
It's not bright yellow or bright...
That's, you know, I...
I think it'll be more of a beige kind of modern-looking, and the roof won't be...
The, we're losing the raised seam roof, I'd imagine? Is that what you're saying?
They're modifying it, so it will look different.
Okay.
Yeah, Wayne's Row just did theirs, McDonald's, all over again. And then there's this beige like that. I think it's probably gonna look the same. Wayne's, up in Wayne's Row.
Very boxy, stone.
Okay. Tidy? I mean, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright is loved by many, but not all, say it that way, so...
It doesn't look like a McDonald's.
Okay.
I'll give it that.
Is it more subtle?
Blends in more with the town, I guess.
Okay, well, that's, that's my hope. My, my point is this, and if we have any say in that, I'd like to see them use the, basically, the vernacular of the architecture we already have in place.
Well, we don't.
We, we have no say?
It doesn't really have to go to the planning commission. It's just a cosmetic upgrade.
Is it an ask we can make of them then? I mean, just a polite, say, hey, we'd like to see this within our community? I mean, I don't think that's a problem necessarily. They can, of course, say no, assuming that it's not, you know, something that we're requiring them. But at the same time, you know, we...
I mean, it's not like you're talking about an individual mom and pop store. You're talking about a commercial chain that's nationwide or international.
And therefore, they have the resources to do this.
And, and they also have the resources to pull it out of here too, so...
I...
But we do have the plans.
I understand that, but...
I would encourage you to look at them, and that might help clarify a little bit more. Anybody that wants to see them can certainly come in and look at them.
I would certainly not want to lose them, but at the same time, I, I want them to be part of our community, not a sore thumb. And I think they, I think they did reasonably well last time with their aesthetic, and I just, you know, the Ed McMahon line of the spaceship from outer space, you know, the, uh, the look we're not desirous of. I mean, in, in fairness to what we're, we're going after for the town, and like a, a quality-looking place, we want to maintain that. And that's why I would ask town staff, if they could ask them, uh, just, just to make that request, so it does fit in appropriately. And, and I think they do have the resources for that, so...
They might be privately owned.
And I understand that too, but I, I think, maybe perhaps McDonald's has a palette they can, you know, pull from. Uh, I, I know for a fact, and this is an extreme, but in Sedona, the golden arches aren't golden, but they're pink by requirement of towns and plan. You know, so, you know, i- if they say no, we gave them the chance to say no, but I would like us to ask them.
We'll see what we can do. We'll see. Yeah. I mean, that's all we can do is ask, but I, I would encourage you to look at the plans.
Sure, okay, okay.
But yes, we can see what we can do.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? No. All right, so we move from the planner's report now to the commissioner's comments. Ms. Buckman?
I do. About the pool. And I don't know if this is the right time to, to bring it up. I would like to entertain, um, since we have seventy percent of our residents underneath the Alice level having a sliding scale, and I've done some research on that. But I don't know if I could just bring that up now, or if we have to make that item for further discussion. That also, that the Boy Scouts have showed some interest in running the pool concession stand, and that they would do a cooperative effort, maybe with the Girl Scouts, um, on that venture. And they're still thinking about that, so I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Also, um, that the community members have put together a yoga, which is a donation yoga, um, at the VFW on Main Street. So it's open to everyone, so if you can't afford it, you can still go. If you can't afford it, you go. You know, you know, so that's Tuesdays and Thursdays at six thirty. Everyone's welcome, all ability levels. We have some people even doing chair yoga during that time.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm sorry?
Tuesdays and Thursdays from six thirty to seven thirty at the VFW.
Was this the one that had started here at the library?
At the library, yeah.
Great, great. Good job.
Let's move to the VFW. And then, um, one other thing, uh, as I know that Ms., or am I allowed to talk about Ms. Sibley retiring? Since I just brought it up. I just, uh, what I wanted to talk about was, uh, in the way past, as I did some research, since we don't have a lot of growth in town, I would like to weigh, um, uh, putting that position back with Frederick County, the pros and cons of that. I just, uh, what I wanted to talk about was, uh, in the way past, as I did some research, um, since we don't have a lot of growth in town, I would like to weigh, um, uh, putting that position back with Frederick County, the pros and cons of that. So if we could talk to them, find out how much that would be, to, um, have them as our coding person, Sibley's position, because I don't know that it needs to be a full-time.
They don't do that anymore. They do not do that anymore, they don't.
You've already checked with them?
Um, Ms. Sibley works with them on a regular basis. Um, and I would strongly encourage us not to get rid of our planner's position, I mean, you've got Brookfield developing, you've got Southgate hopefully developing, you've got other places that are in the works to develop. As well as all your code enforcement, all your ordinances, all your, your policies, um.
Okay.
Your community grants, but anyway.
Okay, let the commissioner complete her comments, right, okay.
Anyhow, so I would like to look into more of that, because there hasn't been a whole bunch of growth in our town, and I don't see, and many of the community members don't see it needing to be a full-time position. So I think we should look into that and do some more research on that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ritz?
Kudos to town staff for the, the, um, thought we'd be able to get through this winter without a big snowstorm. It wasn't, it wasn't that big, I guess it could have been worse, but, um, first day of spring, that was interesting, but, um, things got cleared out pretty quickly, so, good job, thank you. That's it.
Oh, pretty good.
Sorry.
Commissioner Ritz? Uh, Commissioner Sweeney, sorry.
Yes, um, as, as Commissioner Buckman has mentioned, the Boy Scouts are interested in using the concession stand for, for the summer. Uh, the Lions Club does have, um, refrigerators, we can donate to them to put into the concession stand, and the Suns can let them use, uh, we have a hot dog thing that they can use to, to do hot dogs and stuff at the community pool. But, um, we would like to use it for Community Day, if we can, to try it out, to see how it goes, to see if the Boy Scouts can, how they will do for that day. If we can get permission from the town to use the concession stand for that, the day, to see how it goes for that day, and then they can see if they want to continue doing it. For the summertime. So I don't know if, if we need permission to do that from the staff, for the, we have to vote on. For that, and also, we'd like to have the town pool open free for the, for the town, um, for Community Day for this year, I don't know if we voted on that yet or not.
We vote, I don't know, we vote, we have not voted on that yet, but we do vote on that.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. I was able to attend a number of meetings, uh, the first one was with State Highway for the Maryland Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Uh, the state's updating its, uh, the state highway's updating its comprehensive plan for, uh, pedestrian and the cycling, um, amenities and infrastructure. The one thing they seem to be lacking is the funding, uh, again and again and again, they kind of come back to saying, uh, and, and represented in the room were advocacy groups, nonprofits, communities like ours, bigger communities from ours. And the, the one thing they seem to really lack on their end is not the willingness to try new things or to improve, um, like sidewalks or cycling infrastructure, but to actually have the means to do it. Uh, and, and that's something just kind of for consideration. So, it was, it was a useful meeting, but at the same time, it just, I, I, I hope the funding is made available in future transportation budgets that would include that, uh, as additional priorities on top of motor transportation, because I think there's great value in it. I'm, I'm a big advocate believing that if there's, uh, more transportation options for an individual, they have more economic opportunity, I, I think those two just go hand in hand. I received a couple emails from individuals related to the park, I shared that with the deputy. Um, another email related to the use of the park, and this individual was pretty unhappy with the decision the board made related to allowing, um, the, uh, the baseball fields to be reserved by, uh, what he viewed as an outside organization. And, you know, he shared his opinion, we had a good digital conversation, um, but, you know, I, I definitely wanted to share that opinion. Livable Frederick, yes, sir.
Is that the email we all got?
Yes.
Or was it separate?
One was addressed to me singularly, it wasn't to the group, so.
Okay. Okay.
Just, just so you know, um, uh, and actually, there were two from the same person, so. Livable Frederick is the comprehensive plan for Frederick County, their, their update there, um, and their intent is to have a healthy, vibrant, usable, livable, economically sound community. There are going to be hearings coming up related to that, and the whole comprehensive plan process is underway, so be mindful, there's a public meeting on that upcoming. There's another meeting similarly for the state of Maryland, related to the transportation projects in Maryland, related to us, uh, that's going to occur, I think, at Thomas Johnson's Cafeteria, I don't have the date yet. But, uh, I do know that it's upcoming, and when I have it, I'll ask staff if they could please post it online, as well as, like, all of our media output items. I was able to meet with, uh, a micro brewer, uh, talking about adding businesses to Emmitsburg. This individual is, uh, he owns a farm brew pub, and he spoke, we spoke for about ninety minutes. He himself doesn't have the intent of coming to Emmitsburg, but many people who want to open breweries and micro, you know, brew places and brew taps and brew pubs and so on, um, they visit him. And they say, what would you recommend, and where would you recommend that I go? And I said, if we can get on your radar as a community, we would very much like to do that. Uh, one of the things he shared is to make sure that our ordinances are, uh, open and friendly to that type of activity. And I think that's something at a future meeting, you know, I'll bring to town staff and ask them to identify and review. Beyond that, let's see, uh, I went to another NICA meeting, uh, the NICA coaches are going to come here for a workshop on Community Day. Uh, they anticipate about forty-six coaches coming to town, some will be spending the night for a, uh, first aid seminar in town. Um, and in, in my view, that's a, a good win, because it gives the town really good exposure on Community Day, and also keeps the door open for youth programs in town. So, um, that more or less concludes what I can bring you from the commissioner report side, yes, ma'am?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
It seems there's a lot of meetings and a lot of invitations, I miss some of them, because I get put on my desk and I don't come in here. But also, there's like lots of meetings that some of us go to and know about, and some of us don't know about, and I was just wondering if we could somehow get, uh, what's going on, and what we're permitted to go to? So that we can have access to it if we want to. That, and also, um, I was talking to this young man and his very disabled wife who has dementia, who he really wants to keep her out of a facility and with him. And they used to live at this Scott Farm House, and it got boarded up, and he's wondering, is there any way that, uh, that could be fixed up, brought to code again, so he could move back in there? Because she's not being successful other places, and it's his dream to stay with her, so I said I would bring it up at the meeting, um, and if it's something that we could, you know, possibly look into.
You're talking about Scott Road Farm House?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know the history about it, but I know that, uh, Mr. Haller tried to give it away for somebody to fix it up, and it was the, it's in very bad condition, so I don't know the extent that it would have to even be fixed up, to even be livable.
I, I was there with, uh, a contractor related to what Mr. Haller talked about, and, uh, figuratively given away, it would have been, it would have been rented, but. It, it would have taken about half a million dollars potentially to bring it up to, uh, a, a livable standard. And it's, it's not in horrible shape, it is just that, um, it would need a lot of attention. And that would be electrical syst- you know, all the systems to make a house livable would need to be taken from ground zero, so, um. That's unfortunate, but that's kind of what the circumstance is. So I don't know that that would be a, an, a viable option for that individual, so.
I said I'd bring it up, I didn't think it was going to be possible.
Sure, 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 no, I understand, I, I hope you shared that, though, um, what you knew, okay.
I have one more.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sweeney.
Um, since you, you rolled up, uh, the baseball and the Little League.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get together with many people through the town, and we're going to try to have a meeting to get our Little League back in, in the summertime. We're going to work on it this year, get everything ready, to bring our children back, to have baseball back in Emmitsburg once again. So if anybody wants to join in with it, we need, we need board members, we need staff. We need, uh, um, donators to donate for teams, to get the teams and stuff ready, I think all the uniforms and everything are here and equipment, we just need, um, people to help run it. And, um, the children really need to stay here, they, they don't need to go to another town, our youth needs to stay here in our own town. So, and I had a lot of people ask me about it already, I used to be part of the Little League for fourteen years, and, and it was really big then, it was, we had hundreds of kids playing at one time. And Pembroke and then Brookfield just opened.
Well, I know that's everybody's hope, the, the staff, the mayor, um, everything that we're trying to do is in the hopes to bring baseball back to the town, so, that'd be awesome.
Maybe nice to have the meeting here where we have room. If I can get enough people together, enough, we need to meet in July, and, and once a month to try to get it all together, because it's going to take a while, we have to resubmit to Little League.
Yes.
And all that other stuff.
Did you already get the information?
No, we have to get all the information, we have, a lot of people in town wants to help, we just got to have to get together on a meeting and do it. But we need to do it, we need to, you know, just set a date, July, and have a meeting and get the ball rolling.
Talk to you after the meeting, count me in.
But, uh, if anybody wants to, uh, we'll try to get a thing out, maybe town can put it on the TV.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, any more comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, we move on, okay? Uh, the mayor's not able to attend tonight, and therefore, we're not hearing comments from the mayor. Uh, I turn now to the public comment sign-in sheet. I don't have anybody signed up for general comment, um, Ms. Henry, you're reserving your right for the agenda item related to transient housing, correct? Great, thank you, okay. Moving forward from there, we turn to the administrative business items, uh, we have a proclamation, uh, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I will try my hand at that. Quickly we go, uh.
We do have a couple speakers for that.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
With the proclamation?
Yes, we do.
Come on up, please, I'm sorry, I misunderstood something.
It's not on there. You're welcome.
I will ask you both, well, first of all, welcome and thank you for being here, I'll ask you to please identify yourselves, your address and your organization, and the floor is yours for a bit. And I should probably.
I'm Lynn Davis, I'm the Director of the Child Advocacy Center, Frederick County, I live at fifteen-fifteen Silom Road, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania.
I'm Cindy Miller, I'm President of Friends of the Child Advocacy Center, names are confusing, but we are a separate organization that supports the work that they do.
Terrific.
Good evening, I'm Chuck, my wife.
Oh, excuse me, it doesn't get recorded otherwise, that's the problem, sorry.
Good evening, I am Chuck Fluke, my wife Beth Fluke, uh, we are local here in Emmitsburg. We have a child that was, uh, suffered a death of child abuse, so we are here to, uh, show our support.
Thank you, great.
We'll keep this brief, but we want to thank you very much for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Talk a little bit about the resource of the Child Advocacy Center and some of the community awareness activities that we have. Our Child Advocacy Center is a program of Frederick County Government, um, we also receive state and federal grants to help us operate. To work with multidisciplinary partners, all law enforcement jurisdictions, um, the state's Attorney's Office, Department of Social Services, and Frederick Memorial Hospital. To address reports of child maltreatment, so, um, uh, abuse and severe neglect. Come to our center, we provide a family-friendly center, so it's not scary for kids, because most of them come to have what we call a forensic interview. When there's a concern, we have a trained social worker who interviews them in a way that will hold up in court should the case go forward. We have a full-time therapist and a part-time therapist besides director person, full-time advocate, um, and we have part-time medical staff, so we have a developmental pediatrician. And we have a forensic nurse examiner, and so, all this means that, um, we can serve the two-hundred-plus children who come to us every year, less calendar year, it was two-hundred-thirty, some from this community. And we want to be sure that citizens know about the resource, um, but we also want to use this opportunity to talk about the promise of childhood. And, and how important it is that we protect children's development, uh, you may or may not know, that if a child's exposed to maltreatment, it can result in severe damage to their, their growing brains, um, it can, uh, limit development ten to twenty percent in brain volume, which impacts school and behavior, and they have to work extra hard. And so, it's important for us to preserve their potentials, and the pinwheels you have in front of you, you'll see planted around, and, and they're to remind us that children deserve a happy, healthy childhood, and that's how we preserve healthy communities. So we want to, um, have you enjoy your pinwheels, and Mrs. Miller will talk about what you can do this Friday as well.
We are an, an all-volunteer nonprofit that supports, supports the Child Advocacy Center. I put out three flyers for everyone, Friday is Wear Blue Friday for Frederick County. We are also having a remembrance gathering in our Healing Garden at Seven West Second Street at eleven a.m. That Healing Garden was created three years ago, when Ms. Davis came to Frederick County, and in her first several months, there were three or four deaths of children to child abuse. Oh, five, I'm sorry, five. And it becomes very difficult, not just for the families, but for the staff, for all of the professionals who work on these cases, they needed a place to go. The city of Frederick gave us this pocket garden to keep up, and we call it the Healing Garden at Benita Moss Park. There are bricks there, and one of the pictures there shows you not a name, but one with a pinwheel, because not all parents give us permission to put the names in there. We ha- we have a, a whispering bench there, because every child deserves to be heard, no matter how softly they talk. The remembrance gathering is to remember those that we've lost, those who are still struggling, those who have survived, the non-offending family members, as well as all of the professionals who work these cases. We have another event on Saturday, that's First Saturday in Downtown Frederick, that's, that is a celebration of childhood. And it's all about having fun with the kids in the park. We do have a fundraiser, it's on April fourteenth, it is an inter-agency basketball game, the different agencies that work to investigate and treat the children. Uh, we welcome everybody, it is going to be at Frederick High School, the new high school, at, starting at noon until six-ish, whenever they finish. So, we welcome everyone to come, and I hope to see you at the remembrance gathering.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One more thing about Wear Blue Day, you have some strong supporters here on your staff who would like you all to wear blue on Friday. And if you would do that with your colleagues, with, um, your families or businesses, and take a picture and, um, put it on Facebook, and I guess the word is tag, the Child Advocacy Center and the Friends. I don't do Facebook, but I, I like looking when everyone else does, um, and, and do that for us, that would be really helpful. Also, I just want to, um, applaud you, I heard you talk about the Alice Report, and you're monitoring your community's financial well-being, and, and you're looking at keeping your kids close and active, and those things, all are protective factors when you address them. So, thank you for what you're doing for Emmitsburg children as well.
Great, thank you for coming tonight, and we'll read the proclamation.
We'll stand and listen.
Okay, great, don't feel obligated to stand, I'm, I'm a slow. I'm a slow speaker, okay. Proclamation, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April twenty eighteen. Whereas, child abuse prevention is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas, the effects of child abuse are felt by a whole community and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because partnerships are created among social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, local governments, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, youth-serving prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage youth to develop strong ties to their community. And whereas, all citizens should become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Emmitsburg, and call upon all citizens, community, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the Emmitsburg community. Adopted this third day of twenty eighteen. Sorry, third, second, sorry, second day of April twenty eighteen. And there it is, okay, thank you guys very much. And there it is. Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Can we get pictures? Could we do a picture?
Do you want to do a quick photo?
A picture?
Sure.
That would be great if you would hold your...
Sure, sure. Hold the pinwheels. Yep.
Can you do that, Matty?
We're ready.
And you're already using the pin we gave you.
Yes, indeed. And I'm grateful for it tonight, believe me. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now turn to our next agenda item for the proclamation for Arbor Day observances on April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen. Anything we want to add from staff?
As you know, the celebration, the tree planting is April twenty eighth at nine AM at Community Day. This proclamation also helps with our certification to become Tree City certified. Is that correct? Yes.
Great, okay. So here's our proclamation. Arbor Day, Saturday, April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen as Arbor Day in the town of Emmitsburg. We call upon all citizens and organizations to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Adopted the second day of April twenty eighteen. Very good, okay. All right. So now we turn to our third agenda item on the... Yes, the third is mine. Okay, so I have an update and there's been some rather significant modifications related to the trail program. Under the former model, Trail Conservancy had been able to match the grant with their efforts. Basically, they have been able to, had been able to put the administration of the grant, the paperwork involved in the grant, the preparation of basically grant, I'll just say the office side, the administrative side, has all been able, had all been able to be put into their grant match. The grant format has changed and as such, the Trail Conservancy is not able to match the grant that way. And therefore, at this time, they are stepping back from the grant with Emmitsburg. So what does that mean? Essentially, it's this. We do intend to see the grant applied here. What might occur is the Trail Conservancy assigns it to another organization that would be able to take care of the match or part of the match and the grant would move forward. However, we are also talking with State Highway to, I guess, weigh the viability of this, to see if this can happen. Now, it's my understanding that in the past, it had been able to occur with other entities. So right now, it's sort of an open door. Now specifically, what does it mean to trails? It's unlikely that we will be building new trails this summer, but it's still within the possibility. The goal of this grant was to make it easier for a new person to use the trail, the Orange Trail, to take them to the Rainbow Lake area or to take them closer to it. It would have been a connection between Crystal Fountain Road and Annandale Road that would be easier than the existing connection, that's the Orange Trail, between Crystal Fountain Road and Annandale Road. So the hope is we are able to use the grant, but right now, its use is, I guess, for an informal way to describe it, in suspension. So we don't know if we'll be able to apply it or not. So it's sort of in stasis at the moment. So that's kind of where we are. And I do want to thank the Trail Conservancy for everything it's done. I mean, they've done, you know, immeasurable work for the town.